I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee on Monday, May 23 at 6:00 PM. We are meeting in the Neil Shapiro Center for Performing Arts at the Winthrop High School, 400 Main Street. This meeting is being telecast on WCAT. May I have everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Matucci, will you lead us?
(inaudible)
We have delegates and visitors tonight. Can I have the citation? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, roll call, please. Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Ms. Petry?
Here.
Ms. Woe?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Here. Okay, we have tonight citations for our drama students. I will read a citation and I will ask for a motion to approve them. Whereas Chris Rainey has served with enthusiasm, school spirit, and working as a member of the Winthrop High School Drama Society, whereas Chris Rainey and all of your fellow students and fellow classmates participated in the production and performance of Every Man. Whereas Chris Rainey and fellow classmates were named regional winners at the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Competition for their role in the production and performance of Every Man, resolve that the school committee of the town of Winthrop extend its sincerest gratitude and offer our best wishes for the future endeavors, and therefore be it voted and made part of the official minutes of the Winthrop School Committee on May 23, 2022. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Woe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We are going to, we'll come around the front so that we can congratulate you in person. We're going to call you up one by one and give you your citation and just, we're really proud of what you guys accomplished. We know that you put in a lot of hours and effort to make that happen.
So this piece of paper is on board the stage is driving me completely nuts. So be careful when you walk up. You can just come down this way, walk across, you can shake a hand, high five, elbow, whatever your preference is. If you don't want to do that, you don't have to. So, let's start with Chris Rainey. See if we were smart, we would have lined you up by the way. Tess Thompson? May I have a call? May I have a call? Music, I know. You should have some music. And then we have Sarah D'Amico? And of course, who could forget Ms. Kalinda? You guys have been amazing. Congratulations for coming out here tonight. I know you're on 15,000 other things you could do, and some of our students were at other activities, which we know, whether it's sports or other after-school activities. But we're thrilled that you came here tonight just to let us say thank you. To let us say thank you for being you. For some folks, this might have been your last performance, for others, maybe the first. I didn't do too much with drama when I was a teacher here at Winthrop High School, nor did I participate in drama except for causing a lot of drama when I was an after-school student. So it has been more than eye-opening to me, just as an individual, to get involved in drama when I came back here to lead the school district as the superintendent. And I can tell you, I've been taken off my feet a number of times. I don't cry often, sometimes, occasionally, depends upon what it is. But the first performance, I sat up in that back corner because I like to not be in the limelight, and watched the first performance of my return game. Ms. Kalinda will tell you, I kept touching my face, moved my makeup, because I was taken back by the talent that we got. My niece happens to go to school in Milton and has done many performances both in Milton and also in some drama group in the city of Boston. I brought her to more than one performance here, and she's taken back. And one of the comments she said to me was, "I wish I lived in Winthrop." And that's pretty cool. And it was all about drama, and what she saw, and the play that she was able to see. So again, thank you to you all. Couldn't be done without Ms. Kalinda and her associates, as you know, and your parents for putting up with you coming home late, having to pick you up, because we all know no one walks home, ever, but picking you up late nights and you staying here after long hours of work in school. So congratulations to you.
My congratulations, I say that just because prior to coming here, I spent 25 years at Emerson College, and I have seen 25 years-plus productions. And I think what impresses me about all of you, because I've seen some of yours too, and what I saw there, it's the teamwork, it's the camaraderie, it's helping each other to become better, it's congratulating each other when the job is well-done. And it's those kinds of behaviors, and those kinds of spirit, that kind of spirit, that will live in your heart forever, whether you end up in theater or not, it doesn't matter. You've developed a team, a group, you've almost lived together in so many ways in a production. And I've seen it often, and congratulations to you. You are welcome to stay for the meeting, but you may also, you are also welcome to leave. Congratulations to you. You are welcome to stay for the meeting, but you may also, you are also welcome to leave. All right, do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of May 19, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Petry. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Woe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 22-24 in the amount of $301,155.38 in nine cents?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Ms. Leonard. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Woe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve warrant SVW 22-20 in the amount of $301,155.38 in nine cents?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Woe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW 22-24 in the amount of $934,614.09 in nine cents?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Petry, second by Ms. Leonard. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Stay.
Ms. Leonard? Mr. Matucci?
Stay.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Woe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have a, may I have a motion for a budget transfer of $85,394.55?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Ms. Woe. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Woe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Okay, we, on buildings and grounds, I have one that I'm going to hold out separate from it, but can I have a motion for the 8th grade carnival, Winthrop Middle School PTO?
Motion.
Well, hold on, kindergarten social at the William P. Gorman Fort Banks, and the car wash with the WHS Girls Lacrosse, and Special Olympics, oh, the Special Olympics will do separate.
Hold that off. A motion to approve.
And second by, motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petry?
Yes.
Ms. Woe?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to the, we have no subcommittee reports tonight, so the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Just to begin, it's hard for me to, I'm going to be really loud if I can, so that the folks at the other end of the table can hear as well. So I'm going to start off with just negotiations. I'd like folks to, in the community as well as the folks at this table, to understand we've had five successful teacher negotiation sessions thus far, and will continue along with that process with the goal, obviously, of successfully entering into a new three-year contract, which would take our teachers from 2022 through August of 2025. The current teacher's contract, as you all know, remains in effect through August 31st of 2022. We've also begun ESP negotiations, we had our first session this week, and we have dates on the calendar for our nurses, secretaries, and custodians, and those dates are for May and June of this year, with the same goal of attempting to complete those contract negotiations prior to the end of August. In terms of the budget, we're continuously working on next year's school budget, we're still awaiting, we've had our finance subcommittee meeting, in which I was able to present to the finance subcommittee the needs of the school district, letting them know where we're at with our teaching staff, as well as all other staff members, and materials, curriculum, new curriculum objectives that we have, materials, supplies, outside contracts with various vendors, and was able to walk them through that budget process. There were a number of new members on that team, so it was quite a long meeting, but I think it was productive. The door remains open for questions from that particular committee, especially some of the new members who are going through this process for the first time. There is a lot to the public schools' budget and how we develop it, and how we come up with our needs and our continuation of services that all tie to the district's strategic plan, as well as our evaluation process. So we are awaiting the town council vote, which I believe will happen sometime in June, to give us our final allocation, but we're continuing to work on the budget throughout that process, to make sure that we come in with our numbers flushed to the amount of allocation that we have from the community, in combination with the grants that we use to offset a number of our teaching positions, as well as materials, supplies, and other projects that we are doing. So some school news, Gorman Fort Banks kindergarten teachers have conducted screenings and kindergarten sign-ups. We have one more day next week, which is on Tuesday. At that time, we will have screened about 117, we hope, incoming kindergarten students, and hopefully we'll have our total number of incoming students ready to go, so we can start to do class placements. On average, we carry about 155 kindergarten students, we're anticipating that number to be at least at that, if not up a little bit, this school year, and as soon as we have those numbers finalized, I will bring that back to the committee. On May 23rd, some other upcoming events, the Winthrop High School Drama Society will do a grade-level performance that reinforces the SMART Plan, which is our social, emotional, and behavioral planning for all students at the Gorman Fort Banks, so we're excited about that. And on May 25th, from 6:30 to 7:30, there will be open house at the GFB. Alpati Cummings School Pride Night was a huge success for many of our families, many families attended, many of our students attended, the students were able to show off their work, they made some really neat trifold presentations for their teachers, and parents and family members were able to go around and look at their great work, students were able to explain what they did in those trifolds, and how they were honoring their teachers and support staff in the school, as well as the good work that they have been doing during the school year. The middle school, I'm sorry, the ATC After-School Chorus Program and Drama Program performed that night in the cafeteria, and got great reviews. And Friday, at 3 o'clock, the after-school drama program will be putting on the production of Shrek for other members of the Cummings School in the cafeteria, the kids are super excited about that. Some more news at the Cummings, the community, along with the Cummings School and the community of Winthrop, really stepped up to provide raffles in support of Andrea Salvaggio, who is the daughter of our 3rd grade teacher Maria Salvaggio. We also did a skate night at the rink, and many raffles were donated for that skate night. Over $8,000 was raised for the Andrea Salvaggio Trust Fund, and that trust fund has been put into place from an outside group to support her recovery. The, along with permission from her mom, the Cummings School has asked that we let the community know that she is in one of the best rehabs in the country, and she continues to make small gains daily during her rehab, and the love and support and donations that the community of Winthrop have contributed are making life just a little bit easier for the family, so shout-out to the community. Tons of events happening in June at the Cummings, we have Step Up Day, we have Field Day, that's for grades 3 to 5, we have the 5th grade Moving On Ceremony, we have the 5th grade Step Up Day, we have Grade 2 Step Up Day, and some additional music performances by the chorus and students within the school, the music classroom for grades 3 through 5, all happening in June, June's a super-busy month. All those events are clearly articulated to parents in our weekly newsletters, and the kids are getting really excited, June is oftentimes a very fun month. At the middle school, June 10th and 11th, the Middle School Drama Society is presenting Through the Looking Glass. Tickets can be purchased either online, excuse me, or at the door. The website has the online link to purchase those tickets. Let's see. It's giving allergies atop. At Winthrop High School, May 27th is the last day for seniors, and that's also the senior all-night event. The prom is May 31st, the promenade begins at 5:15 at the high school, and the prom is at the Hyatt Regency in Boston. June 1st is class night, there's a parent-student dinner in the cafeteria, and the wards are at 7:00. June 2nd is graduation rehearsal, students only, ice cream social on the field. June 3rd is graduation at 6 o'clock on the field, each student will have, will get six tickets for field seating. Congratulations to the Winthrop Middle School Winter Belk Students of the Month for April, Grade 6 Lydia Luwali and Aaron Torres, Grade 7 Julian Budrow and Amira Musaif, and Grade 8 Inman Belgiti and Zoe Ray. Congratulations to the following Alpati Cummings students who were finalists in the MWRA poster contest, Callie Brennan, Evelyn McDonald, Jocelyn Tomeo, Millie McDonald, Hannah Castano, Minton, and Sarah Ocho-Palejo. Winthrop High School Girls Lacrosse is having a car wash on Saturday, June 4th, at 9 o'clock at the Circle Drive Way at the Cummings School. And the Winthrop Teachers Association is having a retirement party at the Cottage Park Yard Club on Friday, June 10th, and the following teachers will be recognized, the 2020 retirees, there's no party because of COVID, so that's Kathy Kostounis and Joyce English, the 2021 retirees Judy Bono, Yvonne Sinaro, Jean Fimaliti, Maria Flanagan, Nora Grimes, Eva Kearney, and Pat Vazella, and this year's retirees, Reina Aronson, Bernadette Cosley, Susan Echols, Marie Finn, Michael Kirby, and Mara Sullivan.
Thank you very much. We have, do we have any homeschool applications?
We do not.
Any appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leasings of absence?
Yes, I'm going to have Patty read them. Can you just read those?
Yes, resignations, Eve Madden, ESP at the Winthrop Middle School, Alexandra Riley, teacher at the Winthrop Middle School, and Michelle Harrington, teacher at the Winthrop Middle School. Postings, summer teachers for community partnership with For Kids Only, speech-language pathologist at the Alpati Cummings School, special education teacher at the Winthrop Middle School, and summer school positions at the Winthrop Middle School.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. On a new business, we have a, we need to issue a request or proposal for operations and management of the school food service program. Can I have a motion to issue that proposal?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lutteiri, second by Ms. Petry. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.